Please can I welcome everybody to the meeting of the Health and Environment Policy Committee, taking place at Walton Suite, Winchester Guildhall. Time is 6.30. My name is councillor Brian Laming, Chairperson of this meeting. Please can I advise that this meeting is being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. In addition, video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Please can I remind any officers joining virtually to turn off their cameras and mute their microphones until invited to speak. Please can I also remind members to speak clearly and to remember to use the microphone. In addition, please speak directly into the microphone and do not turn away when speaking. This will ensure your comments are picked up for the audio and video recording as well as improving the audio ability in the room. Finally, please can I ask everyone to ensure their mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent or switched off entirely? Hi. First item on the agenda is appointment of the Vice Chairperson for the previous year. And I have nominations, is councillor Patoa?
Can I propose councillor Cleare, please?
Thank you. Have we had any other nominations? All those in favour? Sorry, seconded.
Seconded.
Thank you. Can we take a vote then?
Agreed.
Thank you. Do you like to come up, please? Do we have any declarations of interest tonight?
Sorry, Chair, can I just do apologies for absence, please? Apologies for absence.
Oh, yeah. Apologies for absence and deputy members, please.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for absence received from councillor Tippett Cooper with councillor Williams deputising and from councillor Warwick. Thank you.
Okay. Declarations of interest? Do we have any?
None, Chair.
Thank you. I would like to run these committees with a fairly tight timescale. And I don't think they should last more than about two hours. So if it goes on much longer than that, I think we should consider putting a guillotine on the motion and bringing any further business to another committee meeting. We agreed on that? Thank you. To note the date and time, future meetings of the committee, we have those laid out in front of us. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Now we've got public participation.
Sorry, Chair, can we just agree the minutes from the last meeting? Thank you.
Alright, okay. Yes, can we agree the minutes on the last meeting? Please switch your microphone on, please.
So there are some matters which supposedly we've brought back to this meeting, haven't been. Page eight, particularly paragraph eight. From reading the agenda, if not, that information has not been brought back to us.
Okay, do we have any comment on that?
Mrs Robbins, across the table, just wondering. The carbon neutrality programme, carbon offsetting. Just looking at the minutes, sorry, one moment. My apologies, is that to do with the carbon offsetting?
Paragraph eight, page eight. The whole of that paragraph refers to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 bullet points. That's. Committee proceed to ask question and debate the report and summary questions on the following matters were raised and responded to accordingly, but they weren't. And a lot of them were agreed that the matters were brought back here. Because we didn't get the answers we required.
Yeah. Yeah, apparently it doesn't show in the minutes on this occasion. Can we bring it back to you?
I'm quite happy with that, Chair, as long as we do get that information. Otherwise we wouldn't have raised it at the last meeting.
Yeah, no, I think that's only fair. Can we do that?
Certainly, Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, so note the date and time of the future meetings. We agreed on that, thank you. Public participation. Now, we're going to move away slightly from the norm. And where it has, where it's been able to ask to speak on a particular paper, we will do that just before the paper. So the first person we've got at the moment is Ian Tate, speaking for the public participation. The other two, three speakers have indicated the papers, I'd like to talk on them, do that prior to start of each paper. So would you like to come forward? When you registered to speak, you didn't say that, so on this particular occasion, I will allow it. I think that's fair. No problem. Right, now to note the work programme for the coming year. Do you have any comments? Everybody agreed on that as a provisional?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Over now, we move on to the carbon neutrality annual report. We have a presentation coming up for that, I believe. Yeah, sorry. Sorry councillor Wallace, I left you off. Would you like to speak now?
Alright, thanks Chair. Right, yes, so I have asked to speak on a couple of items. So the first one was item nine, which is the carbon neutrality report. So first of all, I'd say it's great to see that the carbon neutrality is a key topic for this committee. I suggest that the car, I would, as such, I'd suggest that the carbon neutrality action plan is made a standing item on the agenda. The plan that is being presented today is at the very early stages of development and therefore it makes sense for the committee to have the opportunity to review the plan every quarter as it develops and is then put into action. Since Winchester council declared a climate emergency in June 2019, the annual reports have listed the activities that the council has implemented. The actions all appear reasonable, but the impact is not clear. And so it's very difficult to tell whether the council is on track with achieving its net zero ambitions. For example, it's great that Winchester has identified £15 million to spend on retrofitting energy saving measures to council homes over the next 10 years. But how many of the council's 5,000 homes will this cover? How much additional funding is needed to cover the remaining properties? Where are the opportunities for capturing this funding? What is the council doing to maximise these opportunities? What is the targeted energy saving needed for each home to achieve the council's net zero targets? Are the energy saving measures that are being implemented sufficient to achieve the target and so on? There's a whole bunch of questions that we really need answers to. Similar questions could be asked about each of the, each of the projects covering transport, domestic energy and commercial energy. My understanding is that the work that WSP is performing is a starting point to answering these questions. But we shouldn't expect the WSP work to answer all these questions immediately. And further work will be needed by the council officers before a credible plan can be put together for achieving the council's net zero goals. And that, that, that plan is key, so getting that plan in place. Even without the detailed plan, it's clear that emissions reduction needs to increase price considerably to meet the district's ambition of being carbon neutral by 2030. Both at a local and national level, most carbon savings achieved to date have been through decarbonisation of the electricity grid, switching off coal fuel power stations. Once the impact of electricity decarbonisation is removed, there has been negligible change in annual greenhouse gas emissions in the Winchester district over the past 10 years. Rather, the carbon savings that have been, have been achieved have been offset by increased population. So over the last 10 years, the populations actually increased in Winchester by roughly 10%. So by, by keeping it level, we've actually achieved some savings, we've achieved 10% savings type. In order to get the trend moving in the right direction, more ambitious plans are needed. The council needs to concentrate on where the biggest impacts can be made and act fast. Final point is just to make sure that we have the whole council engaged in this. I know there's been a lot of talk about that and a lot of people have said how different parts of the council are engaged, but I think it still needs more emphasis on that. For example, Winchester council emissions don't include purchase items at the moment, or don't include all, all purchase items. So whilst the larger contracts are included in the Winchester City Council, emissions data, the normal stuff that goes through purchasing procurement, it's not included. And that can be a significant percentage of the overall budget. But that, that is one, an area that could be improved going forward. Ideally, we'd, we'd split the carbon budget down between the different off, between the different groups and, and in a way, each officer should have their own greenhouse gas targets written into their own appraisals. That would be a great way to keep everybody focused on that. Yeah, that's just some thoughts on that one.
Thank you. That was much interesting and I hope the officers will take note. Some of your suggestions.
If I may say to the chairman, this is one of the reasons why you asked for these things, an item made to be brought forward, which is in line with what councillor Wallace is saying. We've promised him to be doing a lot, but it'd be very difficult to see with what we presented with actually what we've achieved.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we've had it this evening.
Yeah, exactly.
Councillor Bathurst, sorry.
Sorry Chair, if I can just take us back to the scheduled items of business. I was just wondering, the meeting on the 22nd of September has only one item. Whether we might be able to bring a subsequent meeting on the 6th of December, the multi-use games area and youth provision forward to the 22nd of September?
It's absolutely possible.
I'd just check with officers that that's feasible for us to have something ready for you. I would have to review that with the team because that does adjust our work programme quite. Can I take that away and confirm that?
Okay. And we move on to the carbon neutrality report. On that.
Chairman, interesting when that paper's produced on the mugger, what carbon savings is having a mugger over.
Can we actually bring that up as a part of the.
What if it could be included in the paper?
Can we proceed with the board?
Yep, apologies, Chairman. Sorry, things have obviously got slightly out of order on the agenda. As our overarching priority, it is essential to the council that we measure the progress towards meeting our carbon neutrality commitments. We are bringing to you today a review of progress from April 2021 to March 2022 on the city council's carbon neutrality programme and are asking the committee to comment on the priority actions proposed for the next year. Those targets are very challenging and with the district targets in particular, we will need to work with residents and businesses to take the actions that will reduce their carbon footprints. We do have this evening a presentation by WSP, who are working with us to develop a roadmap of the actions needed to reach that district goal. And in line with the chairman's request, I'll keep my introduction brief and that's it.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Chair. If I just say a few words before we introduce our consultants to talk to you. So members, obviously you've seen the draft annual report that was circulated with the papers. Reflects on progress over the last year and more importantly, our priorities for the coming year, or proposed priorities for the coming year. And like I say, in a moment, I'll pass over to colleagues from WSP who are working on the roadmap. And that will obviously be a key document, as we've recognised, guiding our progress in future years. Though the data being reported here is for 2020, 21, the more, the, the latest following year, data still being worked on. And obviously during that year, Covid had a big impact. Vengeance in employee commuting patterns were a significant factor and we need to ensure that our move to a hybrid way of working in future retains as much of this benefit as possible. Also venues such as our leisure centres were closed for some of the time and that obviously had an impact on some of the things shown here. New facilities such as the Sport and Leisure Park and Chuzzle Lodge will have an impact, some of which is reflected in this data, some of which is still to come. But the, the positive thing is that those, those new buildings are equipped with systems that allow us to better monitor and manage consumption and emissions. So that, that gives us a good head start with those new. As councillor Wallace mentioned, the idea of having standing items, so in the past, what we've done is bring forward, a bit like Andy's item on transport, that will follow thematic items over the course of the year. And, and that's something which we have in mind to do over the, over the course of the coming year. Transport is obviously one of the key areas and Andy will talk a little bit more about that in context of our wider transport approach in the following item. We are suggesting a property focus on reducing emissions from our corporate portfolio and housing stock. There's opportunities to bid for funding into external funding to help particularly with some of the corporate properties stuff from the public sector decarbonisation fund and we'll be looking to try and maximise that where we can. Formalising our offsetting policy, developing approach to biodiversity net gain are things that we, that will become later this year to ensure we make issues of our land and natural resources. There's strategic plans underpinning this work and they're all progressing, things such as the green economic development strategy was published not too long ago. And more sustainable policies are emerging from our work on new work on the local plan. Wider engagement works continued as set out in the report. The weekend project successfully engaged with many groups and communities across the district. Winchester Green Week, not led by us but supported by us, continue to grow. Establishment of our open forum and the first young persons climate assembly. I've mentioned external funding, so yeah, remains a focus to secure external funding to advance our ambitions. I mentioned about the public sector decarbonisation fund and there's also a proposal that we're looking to submit to a fund called the levy fund next year for investment in, further investment in electric vehicle charging infrastructure. It's just worth mentioning that during the, during the last year, the council's action plan was assessed as part of the national council climate scorecard process and our plan was assessed as one of the top three district plans in the county and in the top third nationally amongst district councils. So we believe that we, we have a sound base from which to proceed onwards, recognising the challenges that have already been mentioned by members. So we're particularly keen to hear the committee's thoughts on our pro, our proposed priorities for the year and also on our presentation from our colleagues from WSP. And that's probably good to, to bring them in, Chair.
Please.
Millie, or WSP colleagues?
Hi, good afternoon. This is Milly Albermorgado, I'm the project manager for the Winchester roadmap to neutrality. And I have with me Catherine Maxwell, our associate, and Bevan Jones, our Sustainable Places Lead. And we're going to do a presentation on a project for you this, this afternoon. So I'm a principal consultant at WSP UK based in the London office. And I think Catherine and Bevan can, can introduce themselves as well and it's a pleasure to do this presentation today for you.
Thanks, Millie. I am an associate at WSP and I lead the Nez-Zeal cities team. Now pass it to Bevan.
Yeah, I'm Bevan Jones, I'm the Sustainable Places Lead within WSP and project director for this particular piece of work.
Should I share my screen to start the presentation? Yeah.
Shall I kick off, Millie, am I right to?
Yeah.
Come in, yeah, good afternoon, everyone. And again, thanks for the opportunity for us to speak here. I'm going to just do a very quick introduction then hand you over to Catherine. So just a very short intro to WSP. We employ, employ, we're a multidisciplinary consultancy and we employ about 50,000 people globally. As we said, the Sustainable Places team is the team which we all sit in and is part of our wider sustainability and climate change team, which sits in the planning and advisory pillar within WSP. Millie, do you want to go to the next slide if you can? Within Sustainable Places, we obviously have, one of our three teams is Sustainable Cities. And we have extensive experience of helping local authorities and city governments with their net zero and decarbonisation plans as well as work around climate resilience and general climate change as well. So I will hand over to Catherine. There we go.
Thanks, Bevan. Perfect, okay. So I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the, the project objectives, the methodology and the timelines. Go to the next slide, please, Millie. Perfect, thanks. So the main objective of this project is to develop a carbon neutrality roadmap for a Winchester city council. And I know the council district is aiming to be carbon neutral by 2030. So as part of this work, we're looking at what actions need to be taken to reach this climate target. So how do we get there? And then putting all of that basically into our roadmap for implementation. And this roadmap will be accessible to the public. Then alongside that, we're also developing a tool. And this will enable the city to plan, manage actions and also importantly, to be able to report annually on, on progress towards those targets as well. So in terms of the timeline, we started the project last month and we're aiming to be completed, all being well, by the end of September. So quite tight timeframe. Just go back to the, thanks, Millie. In terms of the, the context, it's the reason for this piece of work. So the council obviously has very ambitious climate targets, both internally, you know, carbon neutrality by 2024 and then externally, district by 2030. And we've really been brought in to consider some of the actions that can provide the sort of largest carbon reduction potential but are also feasible within the timeframes that we're, we're looking at with the commitments. And part of the development of this roadmap is that the council is obviously very keen to engage relevant stakeholders. So as part of this work, you know, we're trying to get stakeholder buy-in and also ensure that the actions that we suggest reflect the priorities and the preferences of stakeholders. One other reason, sorry, Millie, just go back. Thank you. One other reason is that we're also going to be building on Winchester's work to date and reviewing different plans and policies to sort of inform our analysis going forward. So all of this will be fed into the, the final roadmap. Could you maybe go to the next slide for me? Thanks. And in terms of our methodologies, there's a variety of different phases. The first phase is the sort of data gathering and analysis and measurement. So we are using sub-national bees, UK government data, essentially to understand those are key sources of the emissions. And we're also developing a variety of different pathways, so looking at scenarios to, to net zero. And that will then inform what types of actions we identify and prioritise. And as I mentioned before, this will be considering carbon reduction potential, feasibility, the cost and so forth. And this will all feed into a draft net zero plan that aligns with the council district's carbon neutrality targets. The second phase of work is then the development of a public facing kind of roadmap and the dissemination. So be sharing the roadmap and our method and our approach and also providing a carbon neutrality tool and training to the council staff. And that will be needed for the council to use going forward. That's also part of this, this project. And then phase three is project close. We're providing all the final deliverables, any data sheets that we've been using will all be given to, to the council. Thank you, go to the next slide for me, please? Thanks. So the timelines for this, the first phase, we have already started last month. And the aim is for that to be finished by the end of July this month. So these will be drafts hopefully by the end of July in terms of the roadmap itself. For phase two, focusing a bit more on the carbon neutrality tool and the training, we're aiming for that to be done in August. Because that will take a couple of weeks. And then for phase three, for the final deliverables and kind of wrap up, we're aiming by the end of September. So quite tight timelines, but we're, we're currently on track. And I think, I appreciate that was a very quick overview, but I'm just going to pass you now to my colleague, Millie, who will be running through some of the work that we've done so far.
Thanks, Catherine. So as Catherine mentioned, we started last month to work with the council, so it has been now three weeks since the start of the programme. We have conducted a data collection and review of all relevant documents and climate policy. We have also completed a review of the carbon baseline of, for the district that has been developed by WINACT. We have also modeled what a business as usual scenario would look like for the district in terms of greenhouse gas emissions. And this considers all the policy that has been implemented at the national level and other commitments made by the district. We've also, as mentioned before, as part of the deliverables, there is going to be a carbon neutrality tool. So we have started to set up this tool that's going to help the council monitor their annual progress. And we're going to be doing that at the same time as we develop our own analysis. And we're going to do a high level review, as we mentioned, of the climate neutrality action report. And alongside, we have begun to do a stakeholder engagement plan with the purpose of collecting views in terms of existing policies and programmes as well as future plans for the district, as well as vision and opportunities that stakeholders outside of government, such as city, citizens and civil society have for the future of Winchester. In terms of our initial analysis of carbon emissions, this is based on the base data on energy consumption. And we have been looking at the breakdown for fuel. Petroleum continues to be the highest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions due to transport usage. This, uh, transfer usage is dominated by, is dominating the sector breakdown of carbon emissions. And it's linked to people travelling in and around the region mainly by personal car, which is not a surprise, this is something that has been highlighted in both council emissions, this split of industrial, commercial, domestic and transport as well as for the district. And this kind of trend repeats over time. So this is just the initial analysis. What we're going to do next is to project this onto 2050. So we're going to see the baseline, how it behaves historically and also how it projects onto the future together with the business as usual, as we mentioned, that's covering all of the existing commitments and existing policy, both at the national and district level. And then we're going to put that against all the initiatives that have been included in the climate action plan as well as other future opportunities in order to quantify the impact of the existing action and potential scenarios in which the district can reduce emissions and achieve their target. In terms of the tool, we thought it would be useful to show how it would look like. The tool is going to be an Excel based tool and it's going to allow the council to track progress towards their individual initiatives and actions. There is going to be a summary dashboard where the council is going to be able to see their current emissions as well as emission reductions achieved by different scenarios and how it gets to zero, sorry, not zero, so net zero emissions by 2030. And then what we're going to do in terms of the actions, which is of interest to you. And then what we're going to do in terms of the actions, uh which is uh of interest to everyone, is how that particular action is going to be developed over time, whether that timescale is long or medium, whether the investment needed uh is a large meter or um manageable for the council and that uh where it comes from as well. So there is going to be the enabling conditions for that action to be delivered, as well as the carbon saving. So those enabling conditions cover political, commercial and technical aspects. So we're going to do this assessment for each action that is going to be part of this roadmap to uh net zero emissions or carbon neutrality by twenty thirty. In terms of stakeholder engagement activities, as it is of interest to everyone, we have gone through a stakeholder list that we have developed together with the Winchester City Council to identify the right stakeholders to engage in interviews and group presentations, to identify policies and programs they have um as a priority for the district, as well as their own programs and initiatives. Because all of these efforts will um will allow the the district to achieve uh its climate targets. In terms of our engagement methods, as mentioned, interviews and group presentations are our main uh way of engagement with stakeholders. So interviews are going to be for, and we're going to be meeting next with WINACT. And as well, we we set, we set screen up. And the group presentation that we have identified so far is going to be with the parishes, as well as with certain stakeholders that uh cover um young groups, uh as well as food and transport groups, think tanks, civil society. So this participation is going to be important in order to capture uh what is going to be a priority for them in the next couple of years. Finally, next steps. So as we mentioned, we're going to conduct these engagement um activities plus interviews and workshops. We're going to continue to do our baseline assessment, as well as scenarios modelling in order to prioritise and select the right actions that are going to be part of that roadmap. We're going to move forward with a roadmap draft of a report, as well as a public facing report that's going to be published uh at the end of of August, uh sorry, it's going to be available at the end of August, as well as the tool development and training sessions that we mentioned for the tool. And finally, we will uh finalize the project. Um thank you for your attention, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer. Um that's it.
Thank you. Uh can we press on with the paper and then we'll ask all the questions at the end? If that's convenient.
Thank you Chair, that concludes our uh comment on the report and the presentation, so open to.
Hi, would you like to run through the uh paper? By page?
Yes, if I may start off Chairman, I'm sure other councils have something to say about this. Quite frankly, we're three years down the road with an emergency. I'm just glad it's not an ambulance rushing to a road accident. Couldn't get there. Um all we're hearing time and time again from very sincere people, and I'm not criticizing them, I'm criticizing the timescale. We now have a new roadmap. Like all roadmaps, I think the milestones have been stuck in the middle of the road. We look at other local authorities for comparisons and we decide that we compare favourably. I don't want to compare favourably, I want to compare better. And we're not doing that. We're still talking, talking, we're calling those actions, three years down the road in an emergency. And it's it's not good enough. Uh it 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 really isn't good enough if we're going to achieve our targets.
Yeah, let me come back to a question on this because we've.
I thought we were talking about debate Chairman.
No, we're talking about questions first.
Oh, well I did.
Yeah. Have we got any further questions? Yes, Cat Cook.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to ask one of the presenters if I may. They, I'm sure they referred to other councils that they have, may have worked with or they're working with currently. Um are they able to share that with us and which councils they are? And I have got a second question as well, if if that's allowed. Thank you Chair.
Um Catherine, I think you might want to take that. I I pers- I I personally have worked with Enfield and produced their um carbon neutrality um action plan a few years ago in twenty uh twenty eighteen nineteen. That's me personally, but as WSP Catherine will be able to fill you in a bit more on that.
Yeah, no, happy to, um a couple of most recent projects, I can just draw on. Um we've been working with a West Berkshire council and doing a local action energy plan for them. Uh which should be publicly available in the next couple of months. And also we did the carbon baseline assessment for their environment delivery plan. Um we've also worked with um, for example, West Midlands Combined Authority, so we did their five year net zero plan. Um and we did quite a detailed set of interventions around the carbon reduction potential and the investment required to to implement those as well, so just a couple of examples.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you Chair for those answers. And then my second question um was referring to parish councils. When are you, are you looking to organise something? Is it like a drop in session with them or are you sending them slides? What what's the procedure with parish councils throughout the district, not just the town councils, the district? Thank you.
Thank you. Steve.
I think maybe colleagues from WSP could answer that because they're leading that process. But it's, it certainly will involve parishes from across the district. But Millie, I don't know if you were able to say anything about the process of engaging with parishes?
Yeah, so uh what we're doing is that we're working with the WE CAN um organisation and how they have been working with parishes through their network. So we're engaging with WE CAN and the parishes across the district to organise a group presentation, sort of a group dynamic. Um where we're going to be asking questions regarding their current plans, priorities in terms of sectors. All the efforts they have put into specific sectors are, that are contributing significantly to emissions such as transport. Um any actions they have that are um working with like communities to change behaviour that can also contribute to um driving or decreasing emissions. Um so our main focus for these group presentations is first to introduce the project, of course, and then to identify any potential programs or policy that can be included as part of the roadmap. Identifying the role that parishes can play in delivering the actions within the roadmap. And then also opening an avenue for the city council to continue to work with the parishes after we exit this project as WSP.
Thank you. Um Catherine, that's all.
Thank you Chair, I'm just going back to the paper. And page number sixteen is all simplifications, uh one point four. Mentioned here about uh do not being able to um have a sustainable transport post filled. Just wonder have we managed to fill that position? Thank you.
We haven't, um we have advertised it three times now and we haven't got a suitable candidate. But we are working with Sustrans to see if they could provide us with a resource. Um and we've got a meeting coming up shortly on that to see what they can provide for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? That's good.
Thank you Chair, and and reference the communication with the parishes. Will that be via their parish clerks, if I may ask? Thank you.
So as you mentioned, we are supporting ourselves with through the council and also with WE CAN as part of WINACT. Um and their net existing network uh of parishes. Um so I'm assuming that they have the right contact people to to engage in these um group presentations. Um what we're doing at the moment is designing uh the agenda and the information that we're going to be providing during the sessions. But a next step is to meet with the WE CAN um network to to basically finish all the of the planning and identifying the right people within the parishes to engage in these group presentations. We haven't really finished um the planning and we're still in that phase of identifying the right people to attend these sessions.
Uh just like you said, just um to be clear, also the WE CAN, for those that aren't aware, the WE CAN projects, the as a a piece of work that was going on for, over the course of a year, um WINACT and the Centre for Sustainable Energy engaged with lots of communities across the district, many of the parishes did in, did engage, not every single one. So we'll work with WSP and make sure that that all parishes are given the opportunity to participate.
Thank you. That's clear.
Thank you Chair, and may I thank you all for your presentation, appreciated. Um it appears to me you have a lot to do. And as you mentioned, a very tight timeline, so I'm going to ask you a question. Are you quite confident you are on track and will continue to be on track? Is that a difficult question for you?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. Um I think we are fairly confident. Um I think uh a lot of it comes down to the your responsiveness of the teams we're working with, which so far has has been good. Um but it's just if we have any clarifications, anything that we need prompt response that we can, we can deliver to these these timeframes. Um but seeing that we have done similar projects in in the past, and so we appreciate that sometimes there are always, you know, tight deadlines associated with these things. But um obviously we're fairly confident, um as long as we get information in a timely manner. Um if there is any kind of uh slippage with the project, we'll always communicate this in advance. Uh sometimes these things happen where we need more feedback, it's, you know, the development of a roadmap is quite an iterative process. Sometimes it does need a bit of to and fro, to be honest. Um but yeah, as far as possible, we will, we will stick to those timelines. But if not, we will always give a heads up. I don't know if Bevan normally want to to chip in.
Uh no, just exactly what you said Catherine, so yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to add that we have regular meetings with the team, so we're discussing the work programme. We're making sure that all those issues are addressed and we're supporting them in the in the delivery of this. I think we we recognise that we really do want this piece of work and that we want to move quickly with it, we want to utilise it. And and so that's why we've given it quite a tight timescale, because we understand the urgency and the need for this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, we also have got the uh meeting coming up on twenty second of September. Will you be in a position then hopefully to be able to report back to this committee?
That's the plan, that's why it's a tight timescale, yes.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions we have on this paper? No? Would you like to make any further comments, councillor Ernie?
Thank you, I'd just like to um respond to councillor Wallace. Um I do agree with a lot of what he said. Um I think we do have a lot of the data that's needed, we have a lot of the activities going on that we need to reach our targets. However, what we don't have is a clear plan where we can set it out exactly and demonstrate um which projects are going to give the biggest bang for the buck. And that's certainly something which I've asked officers uh to be working on in the next few months so that we can come back and report to you in a much clearer format than the information that we currently have.
Thank you, there's something wrong with your mic, you get a lot of feedback, I don't know why. No one else is.
Alright, thank you. Can we move on to debate now, please? Yeah.
Uh I won't repeat what I said, um I am concerned uh some of that. According to the report should be given, only four out of forty eight parish councils are taking part in some form of debate. That's your figures, not mine. Um that's worrying. Um I think one of the problems is, it may be the main problem is that a lot of parish councils do not see this work as being part of their brief. I.e. open spaces, um planning consultations and uh and things like that. We have to change that therefore and make it's part of the parish council brief to discuss this. And perhaps, as is happening in Hamilton, in my ward, and they're one of the few, um we go a bit farther than that, Hamilton has a greening committee sponsored by the city council and others, but a lot of input from the city council and I think the county as well. Um but the loners, there are repair cafes, there's another one Walton Chase. Um that's a very small bite of the cherry that we've got to consume. Uh there is some good stuff in the report you've got Steve. Unfortunately, we've not seen the reports that we've seen illustrated, because it would be nice to be able to spend a little bit of time actually studying what was said. It sounded good and as no criticism of the presenters, I'm sure they're doing matching the brief they've been given. But I'm still concerned about the timescale. What sort of emergency are we operating on? You know, it is, I was at a, I do, you may have been at the um uh the uh Winchester College lecture by Dieter Helm. And he talked about young people, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year olds are going to be living in a world that is four degrees warmer than it is now. And it seems so far, all we're doing is keeping it close to a balance, but it's a balance that's going up all the time. We've stopped the rising curve of carbon emissions. It's a complicated issue, I'm not pretending it isn't. I don't know the solutions, but I've seen so many results of consultations from yourself Stephen, from Andy as well. And I've got a lot of respect for you guys over twenty years. But is this inertia? I I'm sorry Dawn, I don't know what the answer is. We have to be working faster than this, not set up another committee or another forum. We've got to be putting forward to the parish council something positive that they can get together and do. This, I think, is what uh councillor Wallace is saying as well. I don't want to put words in his mouth, he's quite capable of speaking his brief without my help. I know Phil Gag thinks along similar lines, because we had a few words when I came in. You know, we seem to be in an unreal world. We've got to get off it.
Thank you. Anybody else for debate? Yes, councillor Actwell.
Not not debate, but I just would like to correct councillor Pearson. Actually says in the pages that thirty three parish councils took place in the engagement, not four.
Vivian?
Page forty one.
Page forty one.
Forty one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked at the second bullet point, my apologies. That would take um eight percent forward out of forty eight parish councils participating in all four activity areas. That's not forty two percent.
Thank you. Any further debate? That's clear.
I would just like to say, what a complicated issue. I I I I'm going to sing you praises because it is complicated, nobody's got the answer and you've got a lot of work ahead of you before we really reach where we wish to be. But we give you the benefit of the doubt, obviously, because you do work hard. And I look forward to coming back in the September meeting and we can see how far you are on track and where we go. But in the meantime, I hope it goes well for you. Thank you.
Councillor Williams.
Um. Um that's better. I I would also um like to say, I know that we aren't where we would want to be. I know that there is a lot of work that needs to be done. But actually, a lot of the work that has been done is building in the foundations that are allowing us to do the things that need to be done. And actually with this roadmap, the whole kind of point of it is to actually highlight the really kind of red flag, big, you know, bang for your buck areas that we absolutely need to do. We've been able to reduce carbon by doing the sort of the kind of main things that can be done, almost not the easy things, but the easier things. And what we're left with now is the significantly harder things, the things that can't just be easily done. And that makes it very, very difficult. And actually, the issue with a lot of these, particularly for the district, is as a council, they're not directly under our purview. They're more likely to come under Hampshire or because we sit next to the M three or because of all kinds of issues to do with being near Southampton and the docks and all kinds of things that come in from all of that. We have to be working, looking how we can do that. And this is what the hope of something like a roadmap allows us to see beyond our own sort of small parochial borders. It also allows in my mind us to engage with those parish councils to try and bring everything together. And I think that is the key. We as Winchester City Council cannot do this alone. It is not something for just one organisation, it has to be done by every. It has to be done by everyone and everything. And the only way to do that is to engage and to work. And hopefully, this roadmap will give us the means to actually be able to go out, engage with the public, with various organisations, and to actually start to quicken that pace, which needs to be quickened. I think nobody is arguing with you, Frank. It needs to be quickened. And we know that. And I think everybody in the team knows that. And it is, you know, it's not anybody dragging their heels. It's literally trying to do the work that has to be done. But it's, it's, it is, and it's difficult. And I think we are moving. And I'm hoping that we will start to take some real leaps forward. And actually, what we'll see is, you know, big, big steps happening. And it will, you know, hopefully, look this time next year back and see, wow, look where we've come.
I say, Chairman, Southern Parish would be delighted to hear that Southern Parish is not part of the Winchester purview. They've argued that since 1974.
I think we're getting off the subject a little bit there. I would like to say that I think the officers have been working extremely hard over the last three years, coming up with quite good basic premises of what they want to do. It's always been my opinion that we should be having a roadmap to work it particularly as a strong project so that we know where we're going. We know what affects the timeline as it goes on. It's important to get that timeline correct and see what effects different policies have on it and is way forward. But we've also got to think outside the box, because as councillor Williams pointed out, we are on a main route out of the ports, whether it's like road, air or railway. And we do have a lot of pollution from the railway, which we need to take into account because all cross-country trains at this present time are old generation, diesel, electrics. And we need to move on. And we need to put a vast amount of resources into this project. And that's the bit that worries me, is the amount of resources that it's going to take. So therefore, the route, the roadmap is a very important thing to make sure we can manage everything.
Hey, Chairman, I'm not criticising party. I'm criticizing the lack of speed of the council trying to avoid a bad session of worse.
I think this is a subject that we should be all be working together on and take the politics out of it. So I agree with you on that particular point, because it's too important to worry about things like that. So, yes, thank you. So can we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the movement strategy? And we have some public speakers on this. So we start off with Mr Tate, since he would have been first on the list. I've probably got no need to remind you that you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to address this committee. For some background, back in 2018 January, I asked the leader of the council a question about the Itchen Bridge, the city bridge, which some members will recall, I made reference to at your last meeting and it's mentioned in four minutes. Back in January this year, I spoke at cabinet about my concerns about the city bridge and why I felt a new pedestrian footbridge running alongside the existing bridge would be good for pedestrians and air quality. My argument was that at present, people do not use that bridge because they feel unsafe. And so they therefore drive into the city or don't come in at all. Knight's paper is making suggestions about how matters can be improved in respect of carbon neutrality and the movement strategy. But I, but my suggestion, I think, accords with that. Back in May this year, through the good offices of councillor Oppenheimer at Hampshire County Council, he's the executive member for highways, but also for recreation, heritage and rural affairs, I had a meeting with Alex Belzario, who is the Assistant Inspector of Ancient Monuments at Historic England, David Jowsie, Scheme Development Transport Manager, Strategic Transport, Hampshire County Council, Tom Hayes, who's a senior archaeologist at Hampshire County Council, Richard Jobson, a partner at Design Engine. We had a really interesting meeting. But what came out of that was Alex from Historic England, her priority, scheduled ancient monument, not the environment, not pedestrians, and certainly not the cost. So David Jowsie from the county council then explained that if, if there is argument that you make, you put signals on the city bridge, the cost of that is something in the region of two and a half million pounds because you have to reconfigure the whole roads. And, and at the root of this is my issue, that as a pedestrian, I'm breathing in fumes and other people aren't breathing them in because they just won't use that bridge. And it's that dichotomy between a scheduled ancient monument, which only happens to be the foundations, not the bridge itself, only the foundations. That is preventing a really important element of your strategy. As, as the presentation will make reference to, it's looking to reduce city centre traffic, support healthier lifestyle choices, invest in infrastructure. And point, 2.5 actually makes reference to what, what improvements the city bridge would bring. Your 10, your Winchester Movement Strategy, point five says, create a high quality walking route from the railway station to the Winchester Sports and Leisure Centre. But my suggestion, the city bridge is absolutely key to that. So trying to translate the theory and the bigger elements here into the practicalities of how this city functions and resolves it.
Thank you, councillor Tate.
I do think that is absolutely essential.
Yeah, I allowed you a little bit extra time to finish it off. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
I'm sure that everybody took note of what you said. Councillor Wallace, please. I'm sorry, did I fail to mention the last time? You have five minutes.
Won't use it, Chair. Right. Winchester Movement Strategy was adopted in early 2019 with three aims, to reduce city centre traffic, support healthier lifestyle choices and invest in infrastructure to support sustainable growth. Since then, the council has declared a climate emergency and declared the goal of achieving carbon neutrality across the district by 2030. Data shows that up to 60% of all greenhouse gas emissions in Winchester district are produced by transport. It does vary depending on. And as stated in the Hampshire LTP4, national policies on moving to zero emissions vehicles won't get as far enough quickly enough. 10% reduction in car use in Hampshire is required between 2019 and 2030. There's a lot of argument to say it's actually needed more than 10%. But in the LTP4, it does say we've got to reduce it by. This needs to be reflected in the Winchester Movement Strategy vision. And in my opinion, the fourth aim should be added to the Winchester Movement Strategy to decarbonise transport in Winchester. Adding this requirement will help to drive the council towards implementing those activities that have the most impact on reducing emissions. At the same time, it might make sense to add a fifth aim to improve air quality and reduce, reduce air pollution. But that's a discussion for another day, I think. Right. So clearly, a lot of work's been gone into the 10 Movement Strategy next step proposals and into the local cycling and walking infrastructure plan. Therefore, where appropriate, these, in my opinion, these activities should be used to help achieve the transport decarbonisation. The council needs to concentrate on activities where the biggest impacts can be made and those activities that can be implemented quickly. To that end, it would make sense to do cost benefit analyses on each of the 10 WS, WMS proposals and each of the, each of the local LCWIP routes. Thank you. Where the benefit is carbon reduction. So if you do a cost benefit analysis, we can look at both the cost, you know, the cost and see the benefit in terms of carbon reduction. This would help guide the council on the priority of implementing of each of those activities. Example, activities that have low impact on decarbonisation and were high cost could be identified as low priority. Activities that had a high impact and low cost could be identified as higher priority, ones we want to implement quickly. Moreover, this would also help us to identify the shortlisted activities that are not going to achieve at least the 10% reduction in car use. And this will drive us to consider additional, additional or alternative activities alongside those ones that we've already captured. It's just, you know, putting, putting, putting the data together really and saying, you know, we've got a plan, we need to reduce, we need to reduce the usage. Let's look at what those, what we've got proposed here and see is it actually going to achieve that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Phil Gag, please.
You have three minutes. Thank you, Chair. Just to say, the debate that happened before probably means I've got to cross out most of this. I very much welcome the determination to start putting structure on trying to reduce carbon emissions in Winchester. And I had hoped that this report would advance the planning of a net zero Winchester, especially because transport caused, as we've said often enough in this meeting, 58% of the 2019 CO2 emissions. It's, and I had hoped it would be a really important step forward. I also felt that HCC survey seemed to be a great tool for finding out what people in Winchester actually thought about transport behaviour and how they wanted to change it. Sadly, and I really worry about sounding negative, but this report just does not deliver. It's a really good example of what the last item was about. We should not have reports like this that do not address climate change. It does not mention emissions reduction at all and appears to misjudge what people have said they want. It says, for example, all 10 measures were thought by respondents to contribute to the priorities of the movement strategy. In fact, the analysis that HCC have produced shows marked differences. 48% of responses, respondents voted for safe cycle routes, 42% bus services, 33% better public spaces, 28% the high quality walking route. And so this report recommends that a first priority should be doing the east central traffic system, for which only 11% expressed enthusiasm. Neither is the report helpful to say that respondents agreed with walking and cycling networks proposed. If you look at the report, they expressed many reservations about the routes chosen. And I worry that this will not qualify for the DFT Mini Holland scheme. We can't let this report get away with business as usual. There is no excuse for making the least popular east central traffic scheme the first priority. Also, we need to align, as has been said before, we need to align the movement strategy with LTP4. And the LTP, the movement strategy assumed a 45% traffic increase. LTP4 wants a 10% reduction. So we've got to rethink that. And I think I've run out of time. Thank you.
Just managed that just nicely. That's why we've got three minutes. Chris Gillan, please. Yes. Thank you. You have three minutes as well, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The, the previous item on the agenda is important to us, hoping that we will have opportunity to provide input. Passing, we observed that item nine. Transported carbon emissions for the district are the most important, seemingly unexplored elements. We still do not perceive any kind of trajectory for the. Main dismay that the principal actions and expenditure so far on. Been in the direction of likely increasing.
Excuse me, can you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry.
Yeah.
The principal actions and expenditure so far on the plan have been in the direction of likely increasing of emissions. The report on the movement study consultation is profoundly disappointing. A number of individuals and organisations have taken a lot of time and trouble to respond seriously to that consultation. And yet there is no mention at all of this serious commentary, let alone any serious analysis of it. Instead, we have unsurprising and mostly uninteresting pie charts and numerical summaries of tick boxes. We have to conclude that the movement strategy has lost its way and completely betrayed its promise. It is five years since the first consultation, when the aims of reduced traffic and healthier lifestyles were declared, 12 years since the same aim was declared in the Town and Access Plan. What has happened to this objective? The strategy has morphed into good old highway engineers predict and provide for growing traffic. Money poured into more park and ride without taking significant action to remove central car parking. Some 1,400 car parking spaces have been promised for removal over the years and those promises not kept. Traffic has grown and park and ride intercepts no more of it than 12 years ago. And now this traffic generating strategy is touted as part of the carbon neutrality programme without any explanation of how this magic happens. We see nothing in this report that suggests the council has understood the incoherent relationship between the movement strategy and the climate action plan. We see no plausible analysis of how the unsustainable transport disposition in the city and in the district can be changed, or how in particular modal shift to the essential domination of public transport can be financed. When are we going to have a sustainable transport plan in Winchester or even some thinking about it? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Never come to the main. Councillor Ernie. Dawn Knight.
Thank you. As has been mentioned this evening, we have an update report and presentation on the Winchester Movement Strategy and Hampshire County Council's LTP4, setting out the results of the latest public engagement, the next steps and some of the carbon implications. Clearly, the Winchester Movement Strategy is a joint strategy with the district council working with the highways authority. And while we have influence, there is only so far that we can push the highways authority to move, although I'll certainly be using whatever influence I have to try and persuade county to have rather more regard for the emergency nature of the climate emergency than their 2050 target would suggest. But this is an area where we have to work closely with the county. And as I say, there is only so far that we can persuade them to go. And there is only so much finance out there to do so. I'll ask officers to deal with some of the detailed points that were, that were made during the public speaking. But this is an update and it's, while it represents the current next steps, we will be looking for more.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We're just trying to get the PowerPoint to go up on the screen. Here we go. It's good timing. Thank you. Yes, I've got colleagues with me. We've got Geoff Hobbs from Hampshire County Council on my right and Lucy McEwen from Winchester City Council on the left. So we've got the main officers of the movement working on the movement strategy with us this evening. We're going to give a presentation on the engagement that we've done for the movement strategy. I mean, it is rather focused on Winchester rather than district wide, but I can obviously answer questions on district wide initiatives as well. And we're also going to talk about the LTP4. And we do have an opportunity to submit comments on that. Even though the consultation has closed, we've agreed with the county that we can submit comments after this meeting. So that is a good opportunity. So the first slide, I think we've already covered this. Several of the speakers have mentioned about the movement strategy in terms mentioned about the movement strategy in terms of it being a joint initiative with the county council, and the key objectives of reducing city centre traffic, supporting healthy lifestyles, and investing in infrastructure to support sustainable growth. If we move on to the actual engagement, and there have been a lot of comments that have been submitted to us, and although they're not articulated in this report, we are very aware of them, we are looking at those comments in detail, particularly the comments about the local cycling and walking infrastructure plan, because that was consulted on at the same time as the movement strategy. It's an integral part of it, but we thought it was worth doing a separate consultation on that alongside the main consultation, a meeting with the key cycling and walking groups, and we very much appreciate their comments and we are taking those on board, and we intend to revise that document as a result of those comments. So there were 10 main proposals that have been emerged from the movement strategy, which we consulted on, and I won't go through these in detail, but they are focused around park and ride. Park and ride is seen as an important, integral part of the movement strategy. And the movement strategy is based on traffic reduction, and there is traffic reduction built into the strategy. And some of the more difficult measures that we have to deliver, which have been measured, mentioned tonight about removing car parking, controlling car parking, and in fact, changing the one-way system is crucial to enable us to do some of the other things, including to achieve traffic reduction in effect. But we're very aware of the points that are made, and we do support them. We believe that the one-way system in the consultation was probably down to the way we explained it. As a result, it wasn't really supported, and we need to do more work on that in terms of explaining what we're trying to do with Friars Gate, the eastern part of the one-way system, because that is an enabler to enable us to begin to reduce car parking and to reduce traffic in the city centre, which enables us to do some of the more important things like focusing on improving public spaces, improving facilities for cycling and walking by reducing road space, providing bus priority measures, all the things which will have a real impact going forward, and those will inevitably improve air quality and have carbon reducing impacts as well. And another important aspect of the movement strategy is freight. Obviously, freight has a big impact on the city, and we're working with solvent transport on that in terms of a consolidation centre, and we're working with a local company called Zerify, already having quite a big impact in terms of reducing movements through the city by vehicles. Right, in terms of some of the detailed responses, we did have 896 responses, and we were very pleased with that. That is a good level of response, and we are, as I say, we are looking at detail, in detail, at the specific comments that are being made. And we achieved that by promoting it widely, we held online events, we had specific briefings with different groups, and we did quite a lot of work on social media as well in order to achieve that. We looked also very carefully at the spread of comments. As you can see on this image, we were pleased with the spread of comments, that they're inevitably focused on the city, but right across the city, across all the wards, and a number of comments from the outlying areas as well. And that's extremely important in terms of looking at bus movements in and out of the city, knowing where people are. Okay, so moving on in terms of what the consultation has told us, and we've drawn out the main points here, and it is tricky to sort of come to a view on what a consultation's telling you when you've got so many comments, and we won't rely solely on this, but I think we have got a good level of support for what we're doing. There's definitely some issues of understanding to make sure people understand what we're doing, particularly if we want to get people to agree to some of the more tricky things when we start to manage car parking more strongly. And we do have new tariffs coming in in the autumn, in October, which will be removing things like the free half an hour on street parking, introducing a free one hour parking tariff further out on the park and ride car parks, and we're looking very closely at differential car parking charges based on vehicle emissions as well, and we will be bringing something forward to cabinet on that in due course. So we do believe we've got a good level of support, and as I say, we'll be looking at that in detail going forward in terms of developing these measures. One of the sort of common themes through this, which we've highlighted here in terms of what we've gleaned from this, is that cycling infrastructure, improvements for walking and cycling, speed reduction, further pedestrianisation and improvement to buses is a key priority for us moving forward. At that point, if I pass over to my colleague Geoff, and he's going to take you through some of the study work and the LTP4.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Andy. So these three here are not in particular priority order, they are just presented in an order that I'm going to talk about in that order. The ordering doesn't mean anything. So these are three of the movement strategy studies that are currently underway. The one that looks at the one-way system changes, the conclusion to that work, emerging conclusion, is that changing Friars Gate, all of East Gate Street and Union Street to two-way is technically feasible to do without increasing congestion or queues, provided that some of the other movement strategy measures are implemented. And the conclusion would be, by reducing the need for traffic to circulate around St George's Street, Jury Street and North Walls, it is likely to improve air quality on St George's Street, because fewer queuing cars means slightly improved air quality there. The second scheme and third scheme, designs are in the process of being developed for these, and do have some developer contributions available in the Abbots Barn area that we could use for the Worthy Road scheme. It's looking like it would be quite challenging to deliver a scheme that is three metre wide, wonderful route that ticks all DFT's boxes, but we may be able to deliver something that is funded without the need for DFT funding. Third one relates to the western part of Route W1, and we're identifying a series of potential options for streetscape improvement. So the next project is, we're one of 19 local authorities across England who've each been awarded £79,000 to explore what form a mini Holland set of infrastructure could take within Winchester. So by mini Holland, we mean a combination of three different things. We mean improved on-road cycle infrastructure, so that could see some of the LCWIP measures implemented. It also entails new crossing points on busy roads that are difficult to cross currently when severance is an issue. And thirdly, identifying locations that could form potential low traffic neighbourhoods. So we've appointed some consultants to lead on helping us develop this study. It does need to be completed quickly, because Department for Transport have said they want them back by October, so a quick time scale is involved. We've launched a commonplace engagement website within the last fortnight, and we're up to 260 comments already on that, and that will run until the end of July to generate suggestions and ideas from the bottom up, from communities and residents, to be able to put forward ideas that the consultants can then consider. Next. So alongside the 10 schemes, this is a summary of some of the other movement strategy work streams that are currently underway, and more information on these is given within the report. The bus strategy work, we're disappointed that in April Hampshire was unfortunately one of 48 local transport authorities in England who didn't get any funding from the National Bus Strategy, only 31 received funding. So we're working very hard to make sure that during the next window, the same situation doesn't arise again. We are working on, there are other funding sources such as the Zebra Electric Bus Fund. I won't try and explain the acronym, but it's for electric buses and converting depot electric infrastructure to be able to allow overnight charging of buses. So we will be looking closely at future opportunities to bid for that. Can I have the next slide? So as councillor Lernie has said already, funding is not going to be straightforward for delivery of movement strategy measures. It will require a blend of mostly local measures, local funding sources supplemented by competitive bids to dedicated Department for Transport funding streams, and we are expecting the next round of active travel fund bids to open very shortly. And again, that will cover a three-year period like the bus funding did, so we will be working very hard on that bid between now and October. So final slide, please. So as has been said already, the county council has been running a 12-week public consultation on a proposed draft Local Transport Plan 4, and reducing carbon emissions to net zero, albeit by 2050, is at the very core of that new draft Local Transport Plan. It's a major theme that runs right through it, and that entails two guiding principles, one of significantly reducing dependence on the private car and reducing the need to travel, and secondly, creating a high quality transport system that puts people first. So it does involve both carrot and stick approaches of improving the quality and ease of use of local buses and of local active travel provision, as well as considering potential measures that would reduce the demand for travel. So we're aware it will require a significant amount of additional funding, but we will be working very, very hard with city council colleagues to attract as much funding as we can for schemes, not just within Winchester city, but within the district too. And yes, there's an opportunity for, as Andy has said, for comments to be made that will go into the city council's response, which will be accepted slightly late and will be taken on board as part of the formal consultation process.
Thank you. Shall we run through the report now? Have we got any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and the update, very much appreciated. Obviously, this is Winchester based, and being a councillor for Wickham and Southwark and out there in the southern parishes, but I did see under the parking and access strategy the word district in there. So may I have, if you have one, an update on district wide initiatives at the present time, if any? Is that possible?
Yes, of course. We are going to start the process of developing a district wide local cycling/walking infrastructure improvement programme, and that will involve extensive consultation that's being led by the county council and will involve SASS Trans. So there'll be a programme of consultation undertaken on that. So that's an opportunity, really good opportunity to identify important schemes that we want to do across the whole district. The other thing we're doing is we're looking at cycling and parking again, and I know we did this during Covid, we talked to the market towns about additional cycle parking, and we did have some success putting in additional parking, but we want to have another look at that, working with the market towns, and we've got some additional funding to do that. So that's another good, a really good opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
councillor Pearson.
Thanks, Chair. It's coming back related to the district as well, and what you said about the 2050 target, which I know is the government's target, it's certainly not Winchester. In fact, I doubt if any local authorities is using that target other than an excuse. But it is a Winchester study, this, like, that I accept. In fact, the first time I saw Winchester studies back in 2009, and we've had air quality plans since then, and we have targets with the air quality plan, and a lot of things are mentioned from that target actually in here. But there's been no progress. As far as the district's concerned, what have we been very careful about with the bus services? Winchester is the central place theoretically for Winchester district. In other words, that, hopefully, is the first place people look to go to for shopping. That's our theory. It's, in reality, farther south you go, it's not so, certainly Whitley. I doubt if anyone would go to Whitley, where they've got good shops in Whitley. But the bus service, the movement of people, if you want to get people out of cars, is just not there. The responses to your questionnaire suggest that, I would think, a lot of people didn't respond in the eastern part of the district because they didn't see anything that actually had a relationship with what is happening in south downtown Asher Park area. Now, is there any good news for them, or are we just concentrating on Winchester itself? And this is where Andy Maywater picked us here, where we'd been saying initially we needed a western bypass, or we needed an inner bypass, unfortunately, we've got too many district buildings in the way, and it would need another bridge across the itchin as well, and that would interest perhaps, sorry, ex-councillor Tate. Any response to any of that? There's a lot of questions in there, Geoff, I'm sorry. Refer to Andy for this.
So in the context of LTP4, which is district wide, unlike the movement strategy, which is focused mostly on the city of Winchester, one of the key themes of the LTP4 is to, where possible, ensure that people do have wider travel options, and that does include trialling, exploring options for efficiently serving rural areas so that they do have some form of bus service that does represent value for money for any subsidy that is provided for it. Yeah, so demand responsive transport and looking to use innovations like rural mobility hubs or sort of micro mobility hubs, where people who live in villages can use some of these new innovative modes of transport, like e-scooters, to be able to get to a bus stop that's a bit nearer, a bit more manageable for them, and then they could use a flexible, bookable, via an app, minibus service to get them there.
I mean, I agree with that, with that last point. Oddly, it's a policy of the county back in the 1960s. They wanted to encourage vicious wall from Wickham, then made as local centres. And ironically, that's what happened during Covid. Have we learnt anything from Covid relating to that?
I can't speak for colleagues from our passenger transport team, but I am aware of those bus services that do link to Waterlooville and those southeastern parishes, and they have been a lifeline, and we're working hard with operators to try and help encourage people who, because of Covid, are too frightened or have been unwilling to get back on the bus. So we'll be working with them, and I think Department for Transport are looking at ways of simplifying fares and having some sort of promotion later this year that will try and help get people back on the bus.
Local centres gained, people didn't want to go to the local towns. I think Whitley did as well, if I'm correct, Vivian. The shopping centre gained because people didn't want to go out of Whitley?
Did, how much news about buses?
But I mean, you know, it's fine, you know, did we learn anything from that? Because the bus service is just, well, I mean, getting to Petersfield from where I live, the two a day, that really is, you know, for whatever you're going to do, if you're going to use it, you go to work, you may as well forget it. It takes me an hour and a half by bus to get to Winchester. What can I say? Do I therefore want to come to Winchester to work only if I'm going to get on the train and go up to London?
Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
It's probably worth saying, I think the bus industry are struggling at the moment, and Covid has a big impact on them, has had a big impact on them. It's also... It's also very concerning that county council weren't successful in getting any bus service improvement grant, which is a real issue. We are looking at how the city council can fund some bus service initiatives. We're looking at our parking income and using some of that. It's at early stages, but we will be working very closely with Hampshire to see if we can use some of our income to support bus services and support the bus industry. But it needs investment, in my view.
Thank you. councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask the question. In your presentation, you referred to an amount of money that was granted. Did you say 1,700 and something? I didn't quite hear that figure, if you could. But I've got a question that follows on from that, once I know what the figure is. Thank you.
So the Mini Holland funding that has been given to us, the county council, by the DFT, was £79,000. Given the same amount to 18 other areas.
So to follow on with that, thank you. So £79,000. I'm sure you are aware that Bournemouth council were awarded, I think it was either 71 or 72 million pounds. So did Winchester put in a bid for some of that as well? Were they not successful? I appreciate they weren't successful with the bus funding, but are you aware of that? Thank you.
There is, Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole councils secured some Transforming Cities Fund funding a few years back. And Hampshire, working with Southampton and Portsmouth, secured similar funds for the southwest area of Hampshire and the southeast area of Hampshire.
Thank you. councillor Ashwell.
Thank you. I do have a question and I'd like to respond to councillor Pearson as well, if that's okay. Just going on the papers, page 53, 2.10, mentions here is going to be an electric bus trial in the summer. Do we have any ideas about some type of dates or is it going to happen?
It is going to happen. Stagecoach are organising that for us, who provide our park and ride service contract. I'm just waiting for a date from Edward Hodgson, who's there directors on holiday at the moment. He's promised me an update when he gets back in about a week's time, so I'm hoping that it will be very soon.
Thank you. Just in response to councillor Pearson, actually, Whitley is going to be getting a new bus service shortly. It's going to be going from Faram through Whitley up to Hedges. The bus every 30 minutes.
Sorry, councillor Pearson, microphone please.
So Williams.
I have two questions. So one for the gentleman from Hampshire and then one for Mr Hickman. One of the things, when you were talking about the LTP4 and also when we look at the data from our Movement Strategy, you talked about the fact there were 80% of respondents felt that bus services was a paramount issue. And you kind of talked about this idea that there would be a carrot and stick thing with LTP4 to try and get people out of their cars. What kind of things do I actually mean by carrot and stick? Because, yeah, it's not sort of clear in the information, so.
In terms of carrots, it's trying to offer people viable alternatives to driving. So that means investing in improved cycle routes, so proper, safe, secure, direct, coherent cycle networks. The updates to the Winchester LCWIT will help us come up with a coherent network, including links to supermarkets and secondary schools within the city. And the district LCWIT that is being started, which when that's finished next spring, will do the same for key corridors connecting the market towns, the villages, et cetera, et cetera. In terms of sticks, that will be looking at the availability and cost of car parking as a major determinant of how people choose to travel. And also consider measures like bus gates or bus priority measures that speed up buses and get them out of the congestion that affects some routes into and around Winchester. And as well as exploring potential things like workplace parking levies or congestion charging. Obviously, that would be subject to public engagement to come up with some support.
Thank you, Mr Hickman. One of the things I wanted to clarify, on page 30, not 38, 58, sorry, I can't read my own handwriting, page 58, the list of 10 items, I know it was brought up by our speakers about the level of importance that had been put onto some of the items. Am I assuming that the reason that we have these in the order, i.e. number one being the new park and ride, number two being changes to cost and availability of city centre parking, are they because they're the ones that will have the sort of biggest kind of impact immediately? And then going down to the sort of lower ones, number 10, as having less impact? That was really my question.
Yes, I'm sorry, they're not meant to be in priority order. Those are the 10 most important things. We need to determine the relative priority. And that was really what the consultation was about. And I think, bearing in mind what some of the speakers have said, some of the more difficult things are the things that we probably need to do to speed things up. But no, they're not in priority order.
Thank you.
goes councillor Batha.
Thank you, Chair. On page 63, and I think it was referred to in the presentation, the additional measures that respondents would like to see in Winchester were cycling infrastructure, routes and safety, reduction of speed limits, further pedestrianisation of city centre and improvements of buses. All of those, apart from the reduction of speed limits, will probably have a significant capital cost. Reduction of speed limits, I'm just wondering what actions could be envisaged to implement that? Thank you.
So the county council are currently reviewing our approach towards 20 mile an hour zones. So historically, it has been the case that the police won't enforce them. So the 20 mile an hour speed limits have to be appropriate for how the road feels to someone behind the wheel. So that approach is being reviewed and a more open-minded, shall I say, approach to the appropriateness of 20 mile an hour zones is now on the table. So if the city council are willing to work with us on proposals for locations within Winchester district, then we will consider that. And it won't necessarily be subject to some of the same road safety arguments that applied historically.
Thank you.
Chairman, we've got a 20 mile an hour on North Walls.
Yeah.
I mean, the police won't make sure.
Excuse me, Frank.
Thank you, Chair. There are people that are in this room this evening that know what I'm about to save is extremely, extremely close to my heart. And it's not just about the 20 mile an hour, because we are campaigning for that heavily in certain parts of Twyford. I shouldn't be more so personal. But there are other roads that have a figure of speed upon them. And if those figures of speed were removed and taken down from 60 to 40, it would then make those particular roads safer. So can we have the same commitment from the county and from the city council that we work together on those roads as well to enable the passages into the city, for example, from Colden Common and Twyford and further afield, and they come through our villages to get into Winchester? So I ask you that question, can those speed limits be then brought down to make the passages safer for cyclists and people that walk as well, pedestrians? Thank you.
Route from the easterly boundary to the city boundary does see some rather unusual, inconsistent approaches to the setting of speed limits. And you are correct, there's some national, there's some 50, some 40, some 30, and there doesn't seem to be any consistency in how those have been set. So I will take back what you've said to our road safety team and make sure that the points you've made are fed back to them.
Okay. I would like to ask a couple of questions now. Relative to the bus routes, to start off with, we have logical bus routes in Winchester, where certain areas are served extremely well and other areas get non-existent service. And I'm thinking of in my ward of Oliver's Battery, Valley in Stamford, Teck Down. All these need to be improved before we can actually start saying to people, we prefer you to use the bus services. I think that's something that we really need to look at very hard in the first place.
I think I'm right in saying that all the services in Winchester, the bus services, are commercial routes, which means they're based on paying passengers. And therefore they have to cover their own costs and indeed be commercial for the bus operators to run them. So this comes down to funding again, which was the point earlier, really. I think if we want to serve other areas, we're going to have to look very initively at funding and to support those services, otherwise they won't run on a commercial basis.
Yes, but a lot of these bus routes were designed in the 50s and early 60s. And if we look at what happened on Oliver's Battery, where Stagecoach stopped the service because it wasn't economic, and we ended up with Velvet coming in to take over that service, they gave a very good service, starting at a reasonable time in the morning until a reasonable time in the evening, a half hour of service. And what we saw was the passenger numbers started to climb up quite radically. But unfortunately, the service came up for retendering and Stagecoach undercut it and then stopped the service. So that's not basically all on commercial level. Sorry. And that's something that we need to address quite seriously, because it doesn't only affect Patchett Farm, it affects Oliver's Battery, it affects all other places as well. The second thing is, we have a huge volume of traffic coming into Winchester in the morning and going out in the evening. But where do they park? Because the average parking in the centre of the city is under three hours. So where do all these other people park? And what we do with parking charges, how will that affect, if any, by?
I think what we were saying earlier about the use of some of the parking income is really important. If we can identify opportunities for bus service improvements, as you've mentioned, and they can become commercial over time, but they might need some pump priming to get them there, then I think that's a really good opportunity. And the point about car parking, as I say, we're looking at the tariffs. We will be making some changes in October. And we'll be looking further at differential charges as well to support more environmentally friendly vehicles. So that's an ongoing review. We'll be looking at parking tariffs each year. And we'll also be looking at parking availability as well, in line with our council's development proposals.
Yeah, I think that if you look at it from another point of view, that a vast majority of those cars park in private parking spaces. And that's something that we need to look at quite closely, I think. councillor Batha.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions, just to confirm then, in terms of the review that's taking place at Hampshire County Council on the 20 mile an hour limit, when is it anticipated that review will be complete? And then secondly, just in terms of the two-way working on Union Street, does that not provide an opportunity for having a one-way on North Walls and therefore providing a cycling or walking area along North Walls?
So in terms of the review of the 20 mile an hour timeframe for when that will be completed, I don't have a date, I can't put my hand on it, but I will find out and I will let you know. So there is, in terms of the one-way system changes, there's a case to explore how we can deliver less circuitous routes that involve egress from some of the central car parks can be done without having to negotiate the whole one-way system. So we think that the benefits of trying to make Friars Gate, Union Street and Eastgate Street two-way first and allow some time for that to bed down and see how people change their travel behaviour has merit. In terms of road space reallocation on North Walls, that is something that we will be asking the Mini Holland team to consider in that feasibility study, whether that has to wait for a certain threshold of traffic reduction in order for that to be done in a way that can be not resulting in congestion on places like City Road and Carfax Junction. So we'll be looking at that over the next few months and seeing if that can be delivered sooner rather than later.
Thank you, councillor Cook. I think that'll be the last question on this particular paper.
Thank you, Chair. Page 61, the heading is who responded to the engagement? And I think it's the under 24s. So my question is, and I think it was 3%, how have Winchester city council and Hampshire engaged with schools, reference cycling to school? Because like councillor Lernie, I have taken part and I will be there tomorrow morning at the crack of dawn, cycling with a number of parents and children into Winchester to Westgate and Kings. So I suppose my question is, how have we engaged with schools? Thank you. To encourage children to cycle to school.
So we recognise that most schoolchildren between the ages of, say, 10 and 16, a lot of primary schoolchildren do walk to school because catchments are smaller. A lot of secondary schoolchildren do tend to get the bus to school, particularly from rural areas into places like Kings or Westgate. So we are, in terms of this engagement, we did let all schools know about this engagement and encourage them to disseminate this information to pupils and parents. I know the Kings School did that via their parent mail updates. And we did email the head teachers and all our contacts at all primary and secondary schools in and around Winchester, including the satellite villages around, so that they knew that this engagement was going on. So, yeah, there's always more we could have done, but we did do things that we thought would result in a higher than we did get level of engagement from young people. But there's lessons to be learnt there that we can look to learn from for future engagement.
Thank you. Can we now go into debate? Is there any debate? No? Right? No? Yes, I was just about to say that. Thank you. So can we pass on to the next paper then, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sorry for the short delay. Our district is fortunate to have a very good, very strong voluntary and community sector. And our grant funding programme is aimed at supporting these organisations to create cohesive, sustainable and resilient communities. Last year, a review of the three-year core funding programme was undertaken. And in the light of budget pressures, a 20% reduction in the grant budget was agreed. At the same time, the value and services provided by the voluntary sector, especially during the pandemic, was recognised. And a request was made to investigate the possibility of other income streams and fundraising opportunities available to the council in the future. The action to review the potential to establish a charitable trust for grant funds to receive donations from the public was detailed in the September 2021 HEPC Committee minutes. As a result of the request to explore this, ways of raising additional funds for the community grants has been considered. And this paper sets out the findings of that investigation, Chairman. We are now in very different circumstances to September 2021, and that is reflected We are now in very different circumstances to September 2021, and that is reflected in the paper you see before us. These and other considerations have been highlighted. I very much would like to hear the comments of the committee on this paper.
Thank you. Would we like to go through it in detail, or do we want general questions?
I'd rather like questions, Chairman, if that's right.
Yeah, okay, we'll go general questions then. Do we have any?
councillor, does the recent government funding, is it included in the budget for this programme?
To which funding do you refer?
The million pound one, which is for community grants, as I understand it. There's no reason why it shouldn't be, as far as I know, but I'm just curious to know if it is.
Thank you, councillor. I believe you're referring to the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, which covers activities around communities and place, supporting local business and skills and people. This is not accounted for within this programme or the proposals here. That's a separate report that will be going forward on that. Thank you.
Simply, no, it's not.
Yeah, that's clear.
Thank you, Chair. One thing I would like to ask, I know officers are so busy, so the question I'm going to ask is, will officers have the time to go through? Because it's going to take quite a bit of officer time, is it not?
Could I ask which option you're looking at? The work has been done.
Oh, sorry, yes. I was looking at, actually, the Westminster one. And I know that they raised, I believe, a lot of money in the first year, but am I correct that it kind of went down year after year? But surely that did take a lot of resources for officers?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It did take a lot of resources. We've done our best to get as much detail as we could out of Westminster about that. We gathered some information, but they gave as much time as they felt appropriate to us in informing us. It certainly would take some time, and I think of the three options there, the Westminster model in particular, would take up some time and resource from a number of departments across the council. So I think we highlight in the report that that's one of the options in which the funds are collected through the council tax billing process. So clearly, there's a resource implication there in terms of the work of the council tax team, as well as the work of the community team that I work with, who then deals with the administration and the issuing of the grants. So we've tried to draw out in the paper that one of the considerations will need to be the, I suppose, the cost benefit in doing this, you know, the amount that it might generate to feed back into the sector as compared to the amount of time, money, resource that would need to be put in to actually run it and operate in the scheme. So the report kind of sets that out. It's a little bit more difficult with the Westminster model, because we didn't actually manage to get all the cost details in terms of the setup. But you can see the sort of costs that there are in terms of the other schemes. They certainly wouldn't be any less, I don't think, possibly would be a bit more because it's a slightly more involved scheme. So I think the answer is if it's something that members really felt was the way we needed to go, then we would find the time and the capacity to do it. But it may impact on some of the other things that my team in particular are able to do. And like I say, we're really looking to try and identify where there's significant opportunity, if there is, where the income generated would add significant value. I think what we've identified here is that the nature of Westminster in terms of its property profile and also its kind of council tax binding and profile, we are a little bit different to Westminster. So it doesn't seem likely that the benefit we would generate here would be as significant as they did in Westminster. There's a number of circumstances that led them to determine that that was the right approach. It's been very valuable in investigating that. We're not convinced, or we certainly don't think there's the same value that they generated. It's questionable whether it would be, you know, worth pursuing further here, and the report tries to lead to that. Thanks.
Yeah.
It's related to this, what you've just said, I think, Steve. Do we have a policy in place, and funding in place, for the London Bridge?
Sorry, for what?
I'm, I'm.
Yes, we do.
I'm sorry to puzzle you up. London Bridge is a Co's phrase when the Queen dies.
Oh, yes.
London Bridge is old when she's died. And that's the Co phrase that the police tell all the authorities. Now, let's face it, 96-year-old, it's got to be in our minds as to where we get the funding for whatever we may want to do. I wouldn't say celebrate, but notice.
Yeah, Frank, we're talking about the grant money.
Hey, well it.
Well, yeah, that's all.
Chairman, this is about, Chairman, this is about grants.
Yes, that was the point I was making. Yeah. Thank you. In an ideal world, what is the amount of money that we actually are looking to raise, if possible?
If I may, Chair, in the paper, it points to the fact that our overall grant funding part is going to diminish over time because of the pressure on the overall finances. And the paper identifies that there will be a gap once, particularly when the transition funding is removed, of a, I think it says £140,000. So in theory, to make this viable, or if you were trying to fill that gap, then you would hope a scheme like this would generate that much money. What we have to remember is that we have both strategic grant funding that goes to those organisations that really partner with us, working actively in the areas where we want to provide services but don't. We have the priority funding for other charitable groups, and we have the small grant funding. All of that grant funding currently goes out to causes in the community, working with our community to support our community. We have to recognise we can't maintain the level of funding that we currently have. And this was a way of saying, is there an opportunity potentially, as others have, to possibly find a different stream of income?
Yes, I was only looking at the figures that were given in the paper, the likelihood of that we could raise compared to what we actually really need, and whether there's any other solutions that we could look at as well. I don't know whether we looked at increasing the rates on quality homes or Airbnbs and that sort of thing.
Chair, what we haven't done as part of the scope of this paper was look at sort of changes or any differences in council tax policy. We've just really looked at schemes which are sort of voluntary in nature and which create an opportunities in some instances through collection by the council tax billing system, but also, as you'll see, through other methods. But yeah, we haven't, as part of the scope of this, looked at any sort of council tax policy changes.
Thank you. councillor Tuck.
Thank you, Chair. I did have two questions, but Steve's actually answered one of those now, which was to do with council tax policy. The other question I wanted to raise was, you refer to the amount of time that it takes out of the officer's workload, and it means they perhaps wouldn't be doing something else. But we quite often, as a council, spend quite a lot of money on consultants. So please, I'm not asking you to get a consultant in to sort this, but have you not looked at maybe having a part-time role for somebody? I know that costs money, but it could be a graduate, for example, that they could put this as part of their study, as part of their, you know, their education, to say that they've done this? Thank you.
I suppose for me, what it looks like is, we've got these three options, and they've all been put out here with the kind of benefits, drawbacks and the potential sort of running time of them. And I suppose it's to look, for us as this committee, and also potentially as a council, when we take it further, if we decide to, to actually decide which one of those fits with us, you know, and actually is going to be the best funding stream for us, and also to have the least logistical and sort of, you know, issues. I suppose what it comes down, because we've only got some of the information from the Westminster one, so we don't have all of the figures, is, and we do have the ones from Bath, I suppose it comes down, there is that issue on the community lottery, it's an ethical issue, and do we as a council want to go down an issue where we are promoting gambling or using gambling? Now, is that something that we do? And I think that's a question that we need to answer as a council. It's not something I'm, you know, even though I can see the benefit of it financially, it doesn't sit well with me. But I do think that the other models do seem to sit well and do seem to have some really good benefits that actually could, you know, provide us with funding in the future. Because basically, this is funding a gap that is otherwise not going to be plugged, isn't it? That's the point. We've got a gap, it's not going to be plugged, and we have to do something to plug it. And for me, it's really which one of those are the best. And if I was to rank them, I know the lottery would be my least favourite, but I also understand that it's potentially likely to be the most self-perpetuating, continue to make money. So my question would, I suppose, be, is, if that is the case, you know, how seriously, you know, are we considering doing something like a lottery over the other two?
Chairman, we did look closely at the Westminster scheme, and if you look at 1.7.11, you'll see that the estimate is that Winchester could generate 30k, which would not fill our gap. One of the reservations I had about the Winchester scheme is that we are collecting money in the name of Winchester Council and then handing it over to another body in order to get the gift aid. So we're soon to be acting as an agent for a charity over which we have no control. Because although we may appoint trustees, we would have a conflict of interest, I think, were those trustees to be councillors or cabinet members or anything.
Yeah, but I think I go along with what you have the requirements on that, because it is a very delicate matter. And also take into account what councillor Williams is saying about the lottery. I think that gives us a bit of soul searching as well, because of the way that lotteries usually are paid for by people that haven't got so much income coming in. councillor Bather.
Yes, it was more an observation. I noted that both the community contribution schemes, both the one for Bath and for Westminster, suggested that there's quite a drop-off in contributions over time. Is this not a significant issue if we then implemented either of those, in that our actual funds would actually then deplete, whereas potentially the lottery would have a more consistent and regular income? Thank you.
Yes. Sorry, Jane.
Sorry, I was just going to comment on the evolution of the funds that they've raised. The Bath model is quite new, so it's only been running for one financial year already, and they're in the second year of pilot now. They've decided to extend it further years so they can. As far as I understand it, from the Westminster model, they have, over the first, they've been running for four years now, and for the first three years, the income was fairly consistent. Just in the most recent year, they've seen that start to tail off, and they're doing some.
So as I recall, when I was chairman of the CAP, we laid, I don't know whether we laid the requirement down or the Charity Commission, but that time, some charities were getting almost 100% funding from the council. And that was changed during that period of time to, I think, the charity had to raise funding, something like 80% of the funding? Steve may know the exact figure, because I think you were involved at that time, Steve, if I recall rightly. Was it 80% that they had to raise? Only, maximum we could donate was 20%, unless that's changed.
There may have been some specific funding at the time. As a general rule, I don't think such restrictions apply. That's within our gift to do that. I think the issue that we tried to draw out in the paper there was around if some of the councils who set up such schemes have chosen to try and maximise the financial benefit by channeling it through a charitable trust to then distribute the funds, because that enables them to benefit from the gift aid approach, which couldn't happen if the funding came direct to us.
Yeah.
I think in terms of allocation of funding that was collected through a scheme such as this, I think it would be within our gift. If we collected the funding and we allocated the funding, it would be within our gift to allocate it to rules that we determined. I think, again, the point that councillor Power was trying to highlight was that, should we choose to route it through a charitable trust, even though we might set down some rules and restrictions, basically, the trustees of that charity have the right to determine how they use their resources. And if those funds are attributed to that charity, we can't then tell them how to allocate their resources. So while it would have some financial benefits in terms of the gift aid value, it would also limit, if not take away, this council's ability to determine how those funds were then used.
Thank you. Can we finish, go into debate now? Is there any debate? Yes, councillor Clear.
Thank you, Chair. councillor Power, I totally agree with your comments. Brilliant. I realise it's a voluntary scheme, but also, and I'm against the community one, because gambling, sorry, but that's first on my mind. With the cost of living crisis affecting such a large number of our residents, I just think, I'm sorry, I'm not voting for any of them, I just think it's not the right thing at this present time. But I do appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but that's my feelings, I'm afraid.
Sorry, councillor Ashwell. You were hiding in the corner.
Trying not to. I tend to agree with councillor Clear. I'm sorry, I don't feel comfortable with any of this at the moment. Residents are struggling. Maybe in six months' time, we need to come back and reconsider it, but I don't think it's the correct time at the moment.
councillor Tuck.
Thank you, Chair. Likewise, I read the papers, and the lottery, it's a no from me, most definitely. And it's well written, maybe there needs to be some more work carried out, looking into some of the other schemes that may be out there. But it's not something that I would wish to push forward currently, but then, in a year's time, that may be different, because we are all filing it particularly hard currently. Thank you.
councillor Power.
Chairman, thank you. That was my view. I had reservations about all of these schemes. But I do think we need to thank officers for the work done in researching this. It's a well-written paper, and it does lay out the potential benefits, costs and yield of each of those. So thank you, Chairman.
No, I think I concur totally with that. We need that sort of information to make a positive decision on where we go forward. So thank you, officers. That was a really well-presented paper, and I'll work my way into it, I know. So that concludes the meeting, Felicity.
Before we conclude, may I suggest we go through and agree with the recommendations?
Yeah, okay.
I haven't done any of them, I don't think. It might be important for some of the papers.
Yeah.
The first one is on page 15, which is item nine.
May I ask the committee then to agree the recommendations? Got the recommendations on page 15. Yeah, on the first item.
Agreed.
Page 51.
Are we still on now?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I just asked for it.
I'm trying to move on.
Agreed.
Yeah, yeah, I know you were going to go on. Agreed, thank you. 51, page 51, for the movement strategy.
Agreed. Agreed.
I think technically we have to acknowledge that the.
Yes, I think that's the correct procedure.
I missed that out. Page seventy-three, the recommendations for community funding.
No, I don't agree. I don't agree. We've rejected the paper, haven't we?
Yeah.
Don't agree with it.
That's it.
Right, Chair. Just ask, we have rejected the oppositions in terms of funding for community grants. Are there any other actions we can ask the officers to progress? Thank you.
That's a good question.
In terms of the work we've been asked to do, Chair, that was to investigate those options. So, you know, we had them on the table, there were suggestions that while the lottery wasn't preferred, the other two were of some interest, but the timing was wrong. So we could certainly revisit that in six, twelve months in consultation with the cabinet member and just sort of test the appetite for sort of revisiting those and if that existed, something back for further conversation.
Councillor Power, have you got any comment on that?
Sorry, Chairman, I thought you'd finished with that paper because you went back to page fifteen.
Yeah.
Are we now looking at the recommendations in the committee report?
Absolutely. Sorry about that.
And could I have the question again, please?
Yes, of course.
What was the question?
The question was, if we were rejecting those options in terms of filling the gap in funding for community grants, what other options do we have for actually maintaining that?
If I could just comment on the options that we brought forward. We brought forward a number of options that were given to us, such as the Westminster model, the suggestions made. In the research that we did, we came across other options, which included the Bath and Northumbria model. And through the work that we did, we also investigated any other councils that had discussions, did online, and find out whether there are any other schemes that we should put. And in the research that we did, any other options. So the ones found were the ones presented today.
Thank you. Is everyone agreed then? Thank you.
Sorry, Chair.
If I can assist, Chair, what the link in the dance was, it seemed to suggest that you may want us to come back and review this, possibly in twelve months' time, because we were saying, definitely not the lottery, but we may want to look at these two options again in a year's time. The question to the committee was, would you, that's something you're asking us to do, perhaps revisit this in consultation with the cabinet members, whether we should look at this again once the situation's changed? I think that was...
Yeah. Councillor Batho.
Sorry, that wasn't the purpose of my question. It was to find out whether there are any other options other than the ones we were rejecting now. I didn't want to go back and review them again. All I'm saying is if we're rejecting those, we still leave a hole in our community budget, what other things can we do that, you know, could then fill that gap?
I don't know. But we will keep looking. And that applies to any... Well, fair of us. But it is hard time. As a council.
Yeah.
I think, Chair, we were talking about gambling lottery rather than lottery generally. I know the lottery generally is gambling, but I'm concerned specifically about money coming from gambling organisations to sponsor whatever.
I think we're looking at...
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah. No, I think it's a question of morality as well, looking at, and that's the fundamental thing on that.
If I may make a comment with regard to councillor Pierson's asking the differences there. For example, and you've used it as an example in the paper, which is Naomi House, for example, they do a lottery because I buy those tickets to raise funds for that particular fund. So there's nothing stopping one of those other charities doing that themselves to raise funds. But it's just putting Winchester's name to a lottery that, for example, councillor Williams and I, for example, would not feel very comfortable with at all. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much and that concludes the meeting.